Good afternoon, everyone. This is the September first meeting of the Biden Commission on Disability. We meet once a month on the first Thursday of each month. So the first thing I'd like to do is before I introduce the folks who are here with us or anything is ask that we all at least stand for the legions. This meeting is being recorded. Can be accessed via Zoom or at a later date on the YouTube channel. Let's let it lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. First things first is to go around the table and introduce ourselves. I'm Jonathan Gale. I'm the ADA Coordinator for town of Dyken. And Chair of the ADA Commission.
Ken Pacheco, Representative for the Board of Selectmen.
Nicole. Nicole Mallow, member.
Kevin.
Kevin Smith, member.
And guru for computers and Zoom. Thank you very much for always, and minutes. Thank you very much for always doing the extra stuff. So it's always appreciated. We'll go through the agenda.
Sure.
And I think this will be a relatively short meeting, but go ahead.
Yeah. All business agenda item number four, update our MOD project grant status.
So the last thing on the grant, again, similar to everything that we've done before, is the technology component for the town. The the update right now to go live is going to be September 20th. As of now, there's a lot of work in the meantime that I know Leanne is going to be doing from the Board of Stockman's office with different departments to take off some of the old stuff that's still there and update pages, get rid of the minutia, format the scheduling process, all the different components that are going to be there. So she's going to do the vast majority of the work. When they had the session yesterday, I unfortunately was not able to join. I am going to be joining next week for a training session as a ghost trainer, which means I'm not actually going to be able to ask questions or anything because the training is limited to eight people. And the eight people who are going to be trained on everything and anything are the key town agencies or departments that are going to need to use on a very, very regular basis, such as the curb, the town administrator, Board of Selectmen's Office, things like that. I'm going to be doing it as a ghost so that I can be fully aware of the entire rollout and everything they're doing. And that's partly because of the accessibility. The accessibility component won't be live until the 20th. I hope, I understand I may be able to test it a few days before. And then if there are bugs to work out, I'll work with the accessibility team to work out the bugs once it's fully live. But because of the limited training resources, the plan is for Leanne to really be this, the point person who is going to train other folks in town on how to use different components of the website. But so far, so good. It seems to be really good. Everyone who was involved in it so far, who can see it visually is very, very happy with what they're seeing. Mike told me yesterday, actually also because he was part of that same meeting, that he was right, this is what he saw visually. Leanne said that it looks like everything will go very smooth in terms of what is going to allow for access visually as well as for persons with disability. So we're on the move. That's really good. The other thing that I was going to say, and I know Kevin, you have some before and after pictures too, because I was hoping that what we'll start to do is post pictures on the website, maybe one a week of the things that we've done before and done after. So that people can see whether it's the town walkway or all the walks in the park, the park, everything. And I think we, it gives us more of a presence in town related to what the grant did and future grants potentially. So maybe that's something we can talk about. Or I know Kevin, you are super, super busy.
You don't need to talk about it. Just say Kevin posted.
Yeah, but I can, or I can also.
I can do that. I don't need much time to sit on the sofa task, but I was on my payroll.
Okay, so then maybe I'll reach out.
I think we have, we're going to kind of talk about that a little bit later in new business too, so we can cover that.
Okay.
Just who's going to do what.
Okay, yeah, I want to do that there separately. So.
Okay.
But also I'll leave that there for now then. Okay.
Going to give the next agenda if he doesn't sound like you're ready for us.
No, go ahead. Community garden. My concern with the community garden is I've had feedback. I know we still have to get to do a couple of things with grass mats and so forth. It's on the agenda. People have been extremely busy in other directions, so it's not anybody's issue at all. They can't be done. My only concern separately from that is if we had people who want to use the community garden for disability. I had gotten a call from a resident to ask when they could use it and how they could use it. I think this woman had a walker, not a wheelchair, and wanted to go with her daughter to see what they could do. And I think this is about a week and a half ago. But I know in the meantime that the community garden needed some other work as well. And I don't know if they cleared that up or not yet. So I didn't know if anybody's had an answer before I'd reach out.
I have a little bit of info on that because I talked to Jenna personally. I haven't heard anything more, but I can reach back out and see. She had tentatively was going to set up. I know they mowed.
Yeah.
They got most of them mowing done. Looks like there's still some weed whacking and stuff that needs to be done. But she was going to, I think, try to set up something for the fourth. I don't know if she didn't realize though, that it was like late with the weekend.
Yeah, she told me that.
Right.
It's like.
Yeah, yeah, because actually I think she had put it in the Facebook post and then I had, I was texting back and forth a little about some of that stuff. And I think she had said the fourth, but I haven't heard anything else. I can reach back out. I mean.
Do we know if they're harvesting or if they're doing?
They've been harvesting regularly.
Yeah, and she's brought about 60 pounds already of vegetables to the food bank. So it's just a, for that occasion, it is not a community garden. It's the Jamesbury Garden that they raise food for the food bank and the people at Lincoln Village. So this this misconception by a lot of people that's community garden, that they can just go there and say, okay, is this going to be my raised bed? I'll plant what I want there and I can go there anytime and pick tomatoes or whatever. That's not actually where it works. It's going to, obviously they have volunteers to do the weed planting and all that kind of good stuff. Nicole's been there, Kevin's been there, do a volunteer work. So it's not for personal use. It's for the food bank. And she's brought over 60 pounds of stuff to the food bank. And it's for Lincoln Village.
And I think that we know that here. I mean, when I use the word community garden, I think of it as the term community meaning, you know, give back to the community. So give back to the food pantry, give back to Lincoln Village.
It has been this whole thing on Facebook, misconception of what the community garden is. And it went on and on and on about it. And I, my only response was that it's not a community garden and the plant was for, and the people take care of the volunteers and they have a life and they have other obligations. So I just, we shouldn't be using community garden because at the beginning they used community garden, then they changed it to Jamesbury Garden and it's not a community garden. Obviously the community volunteer, where it's wherever they're raised and it's going to the food bank. And she's you know, because the food bank does once a month, but she's been bringing stuff to Lincoln Village during the week. And she said, after a few comments to bring to Lincoln Village, they have a table set up over there and and the residents can go and take tomatoes or whatever. But it's not for, I can't go there again. Just pick tomatoes and go home. So.
I agree.
No, and I think that it's important to address that it is locked because there are things in there that people have donated. A lot of great deal of time has gone into making this. And to just leave it open would be irresponsible. And the fact that things can happen to it. We are all good people. We we know what to do, but not everyone is. So it is, it's the responsible thing to do to have that. And then they sign up. I did reach out to Coop because we did go to a great deal to make the raised beds, to have the flooring. Unfortunately, during the staffing, we just don't have anyone to bring the folks to volunteer there. But I did say I'd reach back out in the spring and maybe we'll have better staffing. They did appreciate that we made those beds that way and that folks could be able to volunteer for them.
So maybe what I'll do is just reach out in terms of, because I think in this case, the woman who had the walker was also a person that had a stroke. And I know the daughter was thinking of the garden if she went over there to do some meeting or do whatever she could do as a way for her to start moving around, getting some exercise and being outdoors. So what I'll do perhaps is reach out to Janet Tanya and see if they're going to have, as we go into the fall, certain days or certain volunteer hours when it's open or anything like that. And then we can at least post it if nothing else.
And I know that Jen is planning for the spring. And this has been the first year. So I give them kudos for all that they've done. But in the springtime, she's going to have volunteers. And kind of have been volunteered for, but like this, this Saturday, we will seek volunteers can contact Ken Pacheco. He's going to be there Saturday. So I'll send the call or whatever. So and she's looking for about five steady volunteers. Obviously Janet and Tanya will be two of them.
So it's almost like a team, you know, we'll call it.
Yeah, so she's in kind of the one vacation. This is, this is why the weeds go a little.
Yeah.
You know, we all go on vacation. This is volunteer. She's not getting paid, you know, on a soapbox. But I think she correctly decided this is a good way to deal with it. I'll take responsibility for the weekend, a month and and everybody.
Yeah, like anything else, it's new when you go to iron out the kinks of getting it going. But yeah, once, you know, set up volunteer sheets and things like that.
And it's been a terrible summer, but he, I mean, my God, it's the weeds. He's not going to want to go out there. Any weed temperature, right? Like so. I did press for that. But anyway, she's got plans and but clearly, I'm generally will be the person you have that person contacted. That would be good.
But I think, didn't they address, I mean, creating a Facebook page for the garden?
She went before the board of selectmen and we gave her proof. We're going to have a Facebook page.
Because I mean, that helps.
Yeah. And which I, I don't have the code for the combination for the lock, but she said it's on a volunteer form. So I felt a volunteer form that code is actually on. So we'll be volunteers will have the code to go. But these things, and as you mentioned.
But you know what? Then that's, that's important to note being just the volunteer code thing I'm thinking. Only because this is going back to where we were a minute ago. If they post that to our new website, the volunteer form, then that vol that code will be there for anybody to see it anytime.
Yeah.
So that may be something to think about.
Yeah, and she, she just got the Facebook page permission for last Wednesday. I'm sure it's not set up yet. And she went away the weekend. So we'll see. So.
Thank you.
Elementary, middle school, events, activities, and workouts.
So I have reached out to, I'll start with the elementary school. I have a meeting with the elementary school principal, I'll leave from next Wednesday. And hopefully middle school at the same time, actually. And that's the planned activities that we can do. What I have asked for specifically is to have either a day or a couple of times to go to all of the first grade classes, the third grade classes and the fifth grade classes. And do 25 minutes to an hour on a person's with disability and bring different, you know, toys with me, things like that. They seem amenable to it. We just have to work out the dates. But that looks really good. The middle school, I don't have specific classes yet. I'm hoping to go to the health classes for the middle school. That will be my goal. I have two other people with disability who potentially would come with me to each of these. And that way there would be a person whose vision impaired is myself, a person in a wheelchair and another person who is deaf. But you know, those are three different types of disability, but I would let us focus on other disabilities as well.
I know a student there that was getting classed, I hope you teach that class.
That would be very helpful. And that student hopefully will see me in a class in her class. And can share whatever she would like to share. Yes. But my goal is to have all of this scheduled by when we meet again to either start it or, you know, have it going on in early October. There are a lot of disability activities that go on throughout the state in the fall of October. For disabilities awareness, and I'd like us to be part of that as well. And I also plan is to reach out to the high school too. I do have a meeting with Dr. Rooney, Mr. Reese, who's now one of our listeners. I think it's going to be from Wednesday, Thursday, two weeks from today for you, Jonathan. And that's really to start to map out what we want to do with the high school. There's two different sides to doing the things at the high school as there is with the other stuff. But for the high school, part of it is the plant itself. And look at the physicality of high school, every hallway, every stairwell. Even in the auditorium and so forth as well, things in the gym, access to the track, access to the outdoor facilities. But then the other side of it, which she's really seems to be interested in is bringing resources in for teachers, for educating teachers and educating parents. So those are things that we can bring in resources for from Federation Control, Special Needs, and some other organizations from NAMI for Autism, things like that as well. And they are already willing to come in and do workshops with free seminars for parents that they have, and also for teachers, different seminars that they have.
I'm going to send you over the contact info for the president of the newly owned seat pack as well, if you would, because I think they really love to be a part of every step of that process.
Okay. Yeah. That would be very cool.
Because they're kind of just getting started and we do have representatives from each town because it's they interhold with Somerset, Swansea, Berkeley.
And it's possible, and that's it. And some of the same people who I'm thinking of who would bring their their things into do the seminars would probably be happy to go there too. These are free seminars. They're, they're fully funded. We don't have to pay for anything. Some of them are one hours, some of them are two hours, and some of them are, you know, a series of, you know, three or four that go for two hours, depending upon what it is. But I expect only me to get, I'll have a full schedule to share with everybody for that as well. That's where it's at.
Thanks. I go school street sidewalks.
School street sidewalks. Okay. I put about six hours altogether into the school street sidewalks. Looking at the intersections, the sidewalks, the grill pads. And when I say looking at, I mean measuring. So we measured the entire length of the sidewalk, starting up at the park, all the way down to where it crosses where the mailboxes are, and then down the other side over to Lincoln Ave. The first complaints that people had was that they couldn't walk down the sidewalk. It wasn't wide enough. There were, you know, they had to go out on the street with no carrot, no, you know, the or, you know, things like that. And people couldn't walk side by side, which is true. I totally agree with that. But in terms of ADA acceptance, the sidewalks for the, for the width are acceptable. The shortest distance from the poles on the outside, which may look not wonderful to people, and they're not all even in terms of the length distance from there, there to the end scene. But the shortest distance is 37.5 inches and they have to be at least 36. The longest instance, which is more on the side of the the other side of, of school street where the, the mailboxes are, is 54 inches. Most of them are between 43 and 47 inches. So they meet, first of all, they meet the, they meet the amount of space that has to be given at 36 inches. And also they meet the grade. There's no sudden slopes left or right. So, you know, you feel like you're sliding either way or anything like that, even with a walker or a wheelchair. The big issue is that there are several residents in front of different pole numbers, and that will be in the report that I provide to Mike, that have a lot of branches sticking out from their fences or from their yards. So as I would walk down, for example, even if I was near the poles in some cases, which is the outside towards the street, I was getting hit in the face or in the chest with big branches, lots of bushes that were sticking out. That's what's forcing people into the street. So the conversation that Tom Ferry and I had, part of our conversation earlier today, was who's going to be responsible for having those bushes trimmed back, whether it's the residents, whether it's the highway department, or whether it's going to be a letter from the Board of Selectmen or even from the Commission on Disability, asking the residents to trim their bushes back and so the residents have full uncovered access to use the sidewalks.
I would, I would say if I had to make a suggestion on that front, make it a joint letter from all three.
So that.
That way not one person is fielding the, you're going to get well back from.
For sure. So and that's, and that's part of what he and I talked about is, you know, it's a conversation to have with Mike as well and with the board selection. But then it may make sense for the letter to come from all three so that it's a full explanation as to why and how and what needs to be met in order to do it. But I'm going to get, my plan is to, when is the board selection meeting?
It's, so it's this past Wednesday.
So 14. Okay, because my plan is to have the report with everything broken down by street intersection and by pole is the way it's done. Starting with pole 29, we'd under pole 10, and then on the other side. So you'll see all of that for the board selection of the mic. So that you have all of that broken down. The bigger issue, the school street, is all of the intersections. So at all of the intersections, there are grill pads. And Tom and I talked about this too today. Where the grill pads come down, the grill pads are supposed to come down when you're walking on the sidewalk, straight at the end of the sidewalk, straight across and take you across to the other side of the side streets in this case. And that's how they're designed except for one spot. All of the grill pads, virtually all of them, don't go straight across and it'll go down and straight across. Most of them have a right angle to them or a left angle, depending upon whether you're walking, you know, this way south or north. But the angle on the grill pads, first of all, takes you out into the center of school street. Kevin, I think you saw some of that.
Yeah, so. Like if you imagine you get to the street and you want to go to that side of the street, like Jonathan saying, the grill has to be like this. Like it's, I didn't notice until they brought it up. They're literally this. So shoot, instead of crossing that side street, it makes you want to go off into the middle of the street. It's very.
It's, it's not just for a person. Remember, keep in mind that for the vast majority of these grill pads, regardless, and I will fully accept that the vast majority of people who are using these grill pads or, or the unencumbered spot to get, you know, off the curb are not visually impaired. They're regular walkers. They're people with wheelchairs. They're people with walkers. They're people with baby carriages. Regardless, in order to go even down the grill pad, if you're in a baby carriage, you know, you're pushing the carriage along or a stroller or anything, you in essence have to go down it, which means you're already on school street. You're not on the side street where you're supposed to be able to go across. The other part of that is that the curvy that comes around the edges, I'm going to use my hands, is supposed to wrap around to the edge of the grill pad on both sides. And in a couple of spots, most spots, the curvy doesn't go all the way up to it and then feather off to a flat surface. What's also concerning on almost all the grill pads, and again, this is defined when I do the report on which intersections and what the grades are and all that. So it's pretty broken. It'd be pretty broken down. The grill pads, in many cases, are not coming to the edge of the street. They're not flush to the edge of the street. They're off the street by, in one case, almost two feet. And then when you go off it, you're still, you still have grass slightly to the right. You have school street to the left if you're going north. So you think, why is the grill pad here? Or why is this like that? Well, it shouldn't, it should come flush to the edge of the street. The other concern is that a grill pad, when you have the, the uncovered access to go down to the curvy and you have that space there, your grade is very, very limited and your grade really shouldn't be above, it's about three, a 3% grade, even though it's not a full small to one ratio. In some of the grill pads, the grade on the left side of the pad might be 3.45 inches and on the right pad, it's up to seven and a half percent. So what that means is that the pads are put in uneven as well. So there are several things to consider. Tom and I are going to visit, visit early next week. We're going to, we're going to walk the, the entire street. We're going to, I'm going to go over everything with him. Mike may or may not join us. And if you were welcome to, if you want to, to walk it so that you can see exactly what I'm referring to as well. But then the question is going to be, what are they going to do to mitigate it? And I think before I can even figure out what they're going to mitigate it, I need to point it out to Tom. I know that there's a plan, and Tom mentioned this, to resurface school street. But resurfacing school street, if you're still going to have the grill pads at the wrong angle, or if you're not going to have the curvy correct, is you know, the question is going to be, how are they going to mitigate this before they repave school street? Or are they going to repaint school street but not go in, you know, and then they repaint, they slightly go to the side streets, you know, around the corners? Are they going to have to leave that open first until they figure out how they're going to repair this? I don't know what the contract holds. I don't know what the contract with LAL did it holds. I don't know whether or not, when they put in for this, there was anything talking about real pets and accessibility. I mean, the other part of this, and the simple part of it, which just shows the unfinished component, is that in several of the grill pads, it's still, there's, you know, there's plastic between different parts of the pad that they, when it comes out of storage or out of the box, if you will. A lot of that plastic is still there and it's never been cut off. So you know, that's just a trim job. But my point is that whoever did this and whoever was responsible for it should have put more care, I think, into the way these things were put down and the way they were laid out. Again, we weren't consulted ahead of time. I wasn't consulted ahead of time. Tom did ask me about one intersection prior to the, the street being done. And I addressed that one intersection and one crosswalk area with him. I didn't know anything about the rest of it until it was completed and I started getting complaints. So that's kind of where it's at. I don't know if anybody wants to come with me when I go or not. If you do, I can reach out to let you know when I'm going. And if you're able to make it, that's great.
Yeah, let me know.
Yes.
We won't have to go. I know Nicole and Kevin work, so.
Yeah, no, I really understand. But I, I don't work. I do have a busy schedule next week. I'm sure we can work on. Okay, yeah, probably. I'd imagine it'll be Wednesday or Thursday. I mean, either way, keep us posted. So. And if, like, if you want to come too, I can try to schedule for, for seeing the morning or later in the day.
When's the, what, I don't know what a grill pad is.
So when you broke that, when you're. Yeah, they're called grill pads. Yeah.
And that's to direct you to go a certain way or to understand that you, you could feel that you're going down to the road?
Both.
Okay.
It's, it's designed, it's supposed to match up with the crosswalk from, from left to right or across or wherever the intersections are. The only one that really matches up is when you go, when you're going down school street, I think it's going south. And you get to the point where you would take a right to cross over to where the mailboxes are. There's a crosswalk there. And so you're coming down here, you're going to cross over this way, you know, because then you're going down the sidewalk here to go to Lincoln Ave. These match up. But nothing else matches up. Even when you get down to the end of school street, where Lincoln Ave is, this, these, the, the pad comes off of school street to cross Lincoln Ave, but it doesn't match up with the other side. And it's too steep. So it's all the paths, one way or another. You know, and that raises other issues too, because theoretically, even in the winter, you know, normally they don't shovel those spots out. They just go around them with the snow pile. And snow gets baked in there. But because there's so much distance back, if somebody were walking down the sidewalk and the sidewalk was shovel, there's no way they're going to even find it. It would just get buried in the snowbank somewhere. So, you know, there's a bunch of things to think about. I think, you know, when Tom and I talked a long time ago about that winter section, he said some of it had to do with the drainage under there and piping under there. But I, I would be surprised if it's like that for every intersection. So I know that was a long explanation I was putting to the game. I'm sorry. But I'll let you know next weekend.
And it's that, that contract has, has it been fully paid?
I don't know that yet.
Yeah.
I don't know. I think something that we, we'll talk when we meet with Tom.
Yeah.
And find out about that. You know, the work was done, what, back in May or June? So I would, I would suspect it has.
Yeah.
But you know, there's, there should be an obligation on the contractor's part to, to get this right. If there was a plan laid out ahead of time, we were never given the plan as the commission for us to look at.
Well, every contract has contingencies in the form of town that the work has to be done to a specific set of standards.
But I don't know what the standard was there. I know what you're saying. But.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Find out what it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, we may want to pull that. I'm sure Mike and I talked about, you know, take, you know, after Tom and I take a look at it. So one step at a time, but that's something we probably want to move on pretty quickly, see if we can get remedy if possible before the winter comes up. So.
Next item is the Library Building Committee.
Anything to share or report? I've heard nothing yet.
I know that you voted on the committee, the people on the committee. You're, you're on it. I, you want initially on, I asked you, you'd be put on it for obvious reasons. I think it's a nine-member committee. I know my conversation with Mike was that the committee, every time you talk about the library, the committee doesn't have to all get together. But it's when we're talking about construction, part of that, that aspect of it. The whole committee should be involved. How many things inside the library that's going to be, have to be ADA compliant at that now? So you'll be involved as well as outside too. The ramp is going to be repaired, not replaced. So I'm not sure what the angle is. It looks to me very, I don't know, that part back, some of you, you would have to check out for us.
Well, that's, that's, that's why he needs to be part of the conversation because the, the, you know, financial aspect of it will be like, let's just repair it.
Yeah.
But it's not right.
I'm going to reach out to Jim or Mike to see who I should be working, reach him. I mean, I haven't, Mike did mention to me that I was going to be part of that. He mentioned it too.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard anything yet. But even if it's the ramp before it starts to get constructed to the outside.
Yeah, I know that because of funding, we initially talked about replacing the ramp and now we're talking about repairing the ramp. It's not that bad a shape, although Jimmy did point out some things that structurally not necessarily ADA compliant, but obviously we want to be ADA compliant. But obviously we want to be eighty eight compliant. So and and it's a lot more work that's been done inside. Maybe, you know, something over to the stage. Where the kids are gonna walk up the ramp. It's not wide. The doorway is not wide enough, so that's gonna be expanded. We're very concerned about the start part of the building that we don't wanna. The doors are very, they're solid wood. The doors are great. They've been there for a hundred years. Uh, so we wanna use those doors, but that particular door may have to be changed because it's not. And uh, there is a fully, I'm saying fully compliant, eighty eight compliant bathroom. On the main floor. That's something you have to determine. I'm just going by what I. What I've seen. But you'd have to be involved in that, but.
Yeah, and I would, I would, I would say it's fully compliant as of when. That would be my first question, because if it was twenty years ago. You know, it may not be fully compliant now.
And we know you can look at something and I'm not gonna be a jerk about looking at it, but you look, look at something. And think it's compliant, but when you get a tape measure out, you know, it's not like the Raffensmuth Town Hall upstairs.
Yeah.
I would say they were client. You check them out from K. K S K M A.
Yeah.
So. You have to be involved, but uh. So we don't have to be involved in every meeting. That was my point, but something when it comes to construction, you have to be involved. And they're gonna work on the outside before we're gonna the inside, but uh. I'm not sure if they hired a contractor to do the inside work or come up with the plans for. He seems, if it's Mr. Shea, he seems to be very conscious of PDA. Uh, compliance, so. Uh, but obviously we want your, you know, your, because. Long story, wow, but you're on the committee.
I'll reach out and consult Kate, uh, off the interview with Mike and Jim.
Yeah.
And. See if there's any construction that relates to A D compliance, start with. On the outside of the building.
Yeah, I think right now it's the ramp, but they also talk about closing the doorway, so you might be involved in that with those in the front. But you don't have to get involved and I don't have to get involved with shingling and that kind of stuff, so no. No, I've got her shingles, that kind of stuff.
Who being all that sort of stuff, no. For sure.
Next item is meeting with the R R regional school, uh, Mr. Moon.
I think.
Yeah, new business setting up our new uh, webpage for the new Titan page. You've talked about that too, I think.
So a little bit about that, um. Do you wanna talk about what you were thinking? Cause you mentioned earlier, we talked about.
Pictures. Well, no, I think that for now that pertains more towards the Facebook page. Um, I think. For the webpage, it's almost. For all of us, I mean, even when I think about, I gotta think about parks too and and uh. C P C is, I almost wanna see what the new page looks like before I. Make any determinations about what I wanna put on it. I mean, some of the information just carries over, but. I think, um. We'll have a chat, almost have a conversation with Lee and let's see what our capabilities are gonna be, how much space we gotta save up.
And if we can have a logo, if we can, they allow us to like a logo or symbol. Or anything, I was thinking of the one that we have for the calendars. So then we keep it universal all the time. Because I think that we can do. What I like about it is that we'll ultimately be able to actually put some events up there and do some little things, even if they're out of town. So that we can get people. You know. Into with A D A. Justina, I shouldn't, this is probably gonna have to mention too, when I'm doing the. The stuff next week and I'm gonna be on the ghost part of it. Justina is also doing that.
Okay.
So that Justina will be able to. Manage our town's page. For us. And I guess you've got so much going on too. I don't want you to, like, you have to. Obligate stuff and then if you, even if there's things you just wanna pepper do for the Facebook page, you can send her an email or text.
Very specific way I feel about that situation.
Yeah, I do.
We're volunteers for this.
Yeah.
You pay her.
Yeah. We can handle it. I I know, I know how you feel, but I'm just saying that need be. She can do it for me for sure.
Yes.
But.
Uh, like as far as the stuff like the big pictures and stuff to go on Facebook.
Yeah.
I can handle it. It's it's fine.
Okay, and Nicole, you know, going forward, if you, you know, for the programs you're involved in. Professionally, if there are things that you think are important as it relates to disability within the community, the county, anywhere to put up there. Okay, so please post it really.
Oh.
So that people are aware of what, even if it's just a link with a little sentence. You know, there's something going on for a second.
Yes.
Um, you know, for more awareness, I think it's really important for us to. To start to hit notice now for what we've done already. Um, but I'll leave that there for now. We'll go to the next item.
I I lost it when I took the.
Brief discussion of ideas from Melbake and Paul Town Hall later on track.
So what I, what I, I didn't mean worth that. I meant the regular. Yeah, what was the next one, by the way?
After that?
Yes.
Facebook page.
Okay. I mentioned last time that I I have. Different ideas and concepts uh, that I think of for. The town hall complex of the playground and. The track area, but I really would like. To hear if you guys have any thoughts right now or not, because I'm. What I wanna want to do is really move forward now and begin to at least identify. Whether there are any companies who. Would be willing to provide some engineering services or some planning drawings. Ideas and concepts, and then we can look at whether or not they're doing engineering studies and grants for that and so forth.
I think to be completely fair, and you know about this conversation that I had with Selecton Hall.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Katavia. About a possible team. You whatever center.
Yep.
I think this fall, and just to be fair to everybody. I think this falls under the same kind of. Perview, purview as as that situation where this isn't something that Parks and Rec is a commission that's discussed. So uh, C O D to just. Say, hey, this is what we wanna do. I I don't think I'm comfortable with the amount of thought I put into it. It's like, I think. I'm just trying to.
No, no, I get it.
Say like, uh, our job here, even though I'm on Parks and Rec, our job here is to advise when a project comes to light. Right, so like, I think at that point, like, you know. We and and Jonathan, you know this, cause this is the same conversation that I had with Selecton Hall. Was that we have so much on our plate right now with Parks and Rec, just trying to get North Plating under wraps. And a couple of the items that we're just trying to, that that this isn't even in, it's not in my headspace personally. And I haven't discussed it with the other two commission members. So I mean, it's definitely in our near future of things that, you know, I would call it our wish list. Of things that we wanna tackle, but it's not something right now that like I, cause the C O D can't go hire an engineer. And so like, that's where I guess the the disconnect.
So do you think it's even worth yet from from your perspective with both hats on? Of. Trying to set up a conversation with everyone, like, now, maybe later October, November.
I think you, I think, uh, well, just to be perfectly blunt honest. C O D needs to wait until Parks and Rec has to put up on an, on an agenda.
Okay.
Just, just, and that's just to be fair to the same conversation that I had with the water.
Yeah. Okay.
I just don't wanna get pushed into, I, it's definitely something that I wanna do in the. I won't say in the near future, I won't say relatively future. It's it's something I do. Personally wish to address. I just, I wanna do it at the right time.
Yeah.
When we all have the time to. Uh, that that's not, I mean, not playing playground is is actually relatively simple in the grand scheme of things. And that occupies, you know. About fifteen hours of my week.
Yeah, it's a lot of.
Just.
Time on your part right now.
But, cause everybody thinks it's just a playground, but you know, there's a lot of instruction that went on.
Well, I think when I walked in with you. Week and a half ago now, I was pretty impressed and said the least with everything that you've done and everybody else's done. The highway department's done. And I mentioned that today, thank you for what it's done. As well. We have people with disability. I think, and then I hear what you're saying confusing.
Yeah.
I don't, I just, I guess the only reason I mention is I don't wanna lose sight of it, even if we don't visit it for another six months. You know, and then.
Well, that's what I mean. Let us.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec. Come to you or us as C O D and say, hey, we're ready to tackle this.
Okay.
I don't wanna let it happen the other way, cause it's just, again, it's the same conversation that I just.
I hear you.
About the other situation, so.
Respect it. Thank you.
You're welcome. And the next thing is supporting our Facebook page, making a blog.
I'm wondering what everybody thinks about that, um.
I'm dying to become like TikTok famous. So like, if I can do a. I know, but I can't get the song. It's corn out of my head. Yeah, don't, don't, don't even get that to us.
So my, my idea of a blog would be to. Um, because I can do some of it if I use WordPress. I can do some of it through the Facebook page. And. Post blog items for discussion about different types of disability or informational or, you know, ask questions or, you know, post just. Generalized, just to get the discussion of disabilities going forward. And moving forward. And not, I don't wanna use it or have it be used as a great place. Cause. That doesn't go anywhere, to be honest. But it could be used for people to share information about with each other about somebody who has a different disability without names. Things that work when you have a different disability, things you try, maybe medical procedures or new information, scientific information. New research, old school methods, resources, whether it's for transportation. Or housing or. Medical services, things like that, so. I'd like to to post a blog on the Facebook page, but I wanted to get anybody else's thought about it. Um, we all have administrative rights. So anybody can post anything they want or delete anything they want.
I I think everybody should take full advantage of the fact that we all have access to it. And I mean, if it's disability related. Put it up. Don't.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to. You know, like, that's the point is like for all of us to be able to share information that we think is important. And I think if something comes up that we, any of us feels questionable, I mean, it's as simple as, hey, shoot, shoot, shoot each other a text or something or phone call. They're like, hey. You know, like, this might. You know, look at certain.
So at least for the, for a blog, because that, again, posting stuff to face, to a Facebook page, the way with links and so forth and things that have graphics. That's really hard for me. I can't see how it sets up sometimes. Um, and it can look really ridiculous, certain be upside down, so that's why I don't like.
Is there a blog?
I know, I feel like.
Yes, there is. Yeah, there is something there to consider on me in the blog. I think.
Even that, like, I think about.
But that ties into WordPress and I can do with that.
I think about too, this is another thing that we can kinda add. To our, to our meetings as well. Is essentially, cause we're already being reported, we know it would be, you could do Facebook Live. Like, we could be Facebook Live. And add just add it on us.
That's true.
From the age and and you might get, cause. I mean, there's, nobody's checking Zoom to see if something's going on, but if they see, oh, they're in commission of disability, went live.
North Attleboro does that, whatever they have. I don't know if it's like.
Right.
Or whatever, but they do it live. Um, and I always end up watching it, which I I would never watch it.
What you know about on there? Uh, can we look at it and see if it's what we can do for next month? Maybe make.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, the tower here, I mean, we can go live. That's not. Not a problem. I guess that might be a question. For Mike and the town clerk, if we're allowed to do it, if we're allowed to do it.
Yeah, I might have to check with Eagle Council or something.
Right.
But let's.
Yeah, it's to be the, as long as there's no language from the A G's office, like.
Yeah.
With kind of what we deal with.
Let me reach out to Mike and find out. And. If there's any parameters we have or can't use, and then we can also put it on our page and enough, so we're gonna be live for our meetings and then. Which is another reason to get people to look at meetings. And we didn't realize we could do that. I'm a big Facebook lover, but not a big Facebook user. So. Okay. Um, anything else?
Committee, we bought some time permits, best parties update.
Anything to call?
Yes. So I think in the last meeting, we talked about how Matt. So I actually, um, yeah, so Matt quit. That's been a little room. I did have somebody and it figures, it's like one of the few people that's not, uh. Somebody from Co-op that signed up as a member with I D V. And I, but I told you, it's funny, you know, I'm, she was so nice. Her son went to D R, was part of that, that's what his program is like looking. For something. And she's like, oh, we signed up in May and I haven't heard of him. So which goes back to my whole inability to navigate the portal and like, basically, right? Couldn't even get in. So Krista got me, Krista Thurston was like. I I don't wanna say it on title, but she's like. Kind of runs like the Boston area. I finally, I spoke to her. She got me back into the portal so I can see who's in there. I still have a problem. And again, it's cause like I wasn't. Uh, touched with Matt. It's like, it's what I'm supposed to do. Like, I can see that everybody's in there. And like, I tried to like approve them, so it showed up on the roster and sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. There's a little bit of navigation that I need to figure out. Um, but I think I'm meeting, I had a Zoom meeting with her. I'll send you that. She just sent it to me yesterday, the day before. I'll send, I'll forward it to you both. I think it's September sixth.
Okay.
So it's like at noon time or something. It should just be like a quick. Half hour sort out some of this, even if like you guys just jump on for a little bit and like even her, I can. Kind of talk about the technical side of things and what I need to do. Yeah. That was like the first time I actually had somebody send me an email. I was like, hey, what's going on?
And similar, similarly to that, um. When Kim was brought in, Lexi and Jeremy off the course country, the other day she ran into Mr. Kelly. Um, and I think that. She mentioned something about, uh, me mentioning that to you just told me today.
I thought Mr. Kelly left.
He's there. He was there.
I thought Mr. Kelly left and went to Little Bridge or something.
No, no, that's a special ed. Are you thinking the special ed director?
No.
Sports?
It was this, it was.
Daniel, in high school?
Definitely talking about.
It was.
He's the sports, he's, he's the director of the sports program.
Okay, but he wasn't the one who ran it. He didn't run the unified sports.
No, he had the information that I wanted to get.
Right, but the gentleman who who always, I can't remember his name now off the top of my head. But the gentleman who had ran the unified sports program forever over there. And was like really successful with it, left and went to the Pinkberry.
Uh, that I don't know.
So, so this is kind of also wanna kind of tie this into the best ways, just to give us a brief. I have a hard stop and button, it's just like. But just to tie this in, so actually. Mr. Hall again had reached out about talking to the new sped director and how parks can tie in. And help with unified sports, which is a hundred and ten percent something she's been doing. Um, across like all age groups. Uh, and then I also met with. Michael.
Yes, yes.
Um, and we talked about like just. Uh, a relationship that goes both ways, how Co-op can help. Not just Titan, but surrounding. Communities and how we can help them. Kind of grow all of this, you know, best buddies program, unified sports across all ages and stuff. So that was like, that was really.
We've been missing that, that unity engagement.
Yeah.
And he's gonna bring it there. And with best buddies, just real quick, I just wanna touch on, I think that it all worked out in the fall. Like now that we're going into the fall, I think really getting into it would be great because the weather's cooler.
Right.
Trying to do some outdoor things, um, accessing some places that are in within town for outdoor things. Um. They might like to have us come. I mean, it's. It's a great community engagement and stuff, so.
Yes.
I'm hoping we can. Push forward regardless of what, how many folks we have, cause I think once you get going.
Yeah.
It will bring. Yeah, just like the getting started, which is always the hardest part, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's the woman I talked to, Mrs. Wong, but that was like the conversation I was having, it's like, I'm dying to like just get. Everybody together, just even just a quick meeting, we could do like a picnic day. Like anything, like, you know, just pre-made sandwiches, stuff like that, so we don't have to think about. Serves safe or any of that stuff. And, and yeah, just let it, let the conversation just flow and then I think we'll stop.
Okay. Um, just real quick, before you have to go. I'm gonna go back. I'm just gonna go backwards for a minute to, um, the business, just to let you all know, cause I forgot what we've done. Um, I did go with, um, Peter Williams. Who is the. Consultant to the town as an engineer, he's a road engineer. Um, for Maris Lane. And Peter and I met there, I think we, I talked before. You need to go about some issues in Maris Lane and some complaints. Residents about the way it was being signed. So I met with Peter and I met with the developer from, uh, Long Homes, actually, who's finishing the project after as well. Um, we walked it, spent quite a bit of time out there. And. There is on one side of the sidewalk, there is an island and then there's a street on the other side. Right from the very beginning, about Center Street, right where the little bridges. Going all the way down, there are different places where there's a big drop on the right hand side by some yards. So we went through the whole thing, um. Discuss what they have to do and how they're gonna build it up with the curving on the insides. And at the end of the curving by the, by Center Street and so forth. And the developer has told me that he expects to have that completed by the end of September. So that will be done correctly, um, and then I can sign off on it as the A D coordinator and. Once I sign off on it, then Peter Williams probably will be signing up to approve it, you know, it's a roadway for the town as well.
I was just gonna ask, it's still private, it's not, that hasn't been.
No, no, here, and Peter's not gonna sign off on it until they complete the work that needs to be done for E D A. So, um, I think they wanna be on the agenda. It's either the September twenty first or the October fifth. Planning board meeting. Uh, but whichever one they want, once the work is completed and I tell Peter, it's all set. Then he'll still look at the other things they have to do that don't relate to me. If everything's done, then he'll sign off on it.